Good evening. The meeting of the Planning Commission and Housing Task Force for Wednesday, November 19th. I'll order on through the roll call. I'm getting re-versed, David McCracken here. Michael Bender here. Tina Rock.
Here.
Welcome. And Erin Fordy.
Erin.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Dennis Tulamairn here. And representatives from the Housing Task Force, we have Bob Friedman. Here and Chuck Chandler. Very much. We'll go on to the minutes. And I get a motion.
I'll make a motion with proof of minutes as presented, which includes approval of the 2026 calendar.
And can I get a second?
Second.
Second. Any questions or comments? Corrections?
Who seconded? I didn't share with.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All any opposed? Any abstentions? Very good. Any correspondence?
None.
And you've already voted on the 2026 calendar. So we're all set now. So we'll go to the referrals that we received from zoning. Regarding the petition to amend Gold Saber zoning map for 6264 River Street. Assessors map 49 lot 25 from Residence AA1 district to the industrial I district. Also area management zone and gateway conservation zone. And I'd like to do both 6264 and 66 at the same time. Attorney, where to? Would you start?
Thank you. My name is David Royston. I'm filling in for Terrence, Attorney Terrence Love. So submitted the application on behalf of 144 Mill Rock Road LLC. Which is the owner of both of the properties which are involved in this application. 144 Mill Rock Road LLC is the company of, as Steve Bogin. Who is the owner and principal of that particular road. We're taking the two applications down every page due to their needs a lot of time.
This close.
And this is the map basically of the property. And we're outlining the subject piece, he says, and yellow on that particular map. I want to give you basically copies of this map and inside the first page is a 11 by 17 copy which I think making it easier to look at. And it also one of the differences is that it has a certification by the surveyor. Survey is 2014. That the surveyor is signed it as being accurate as of with the number 18, 2025. Got a couple more here if we're short down. So basically, the two applications involve the property. Which is shown on the assessors map as lot 25 and lot 25 one. And these are shown on the assessors map as being in the Residence AA1. And we give you another little picture which probably shows it a little bit better. That's the zoning path. So on that first page, it basically shows the zoning map and the because it's a little hard to decipher on the second page of that. I'm showing you the subject properties. The subject property in color code is basically yellow for the AA1 zone in which these two properties are located. The only access to these properties is through the adjacent property also owned by 144 Mill Rock Road LLC. And this is the last pictures I'm going to show you, but it basically shows the entrance to the adjacent property. The applicant. And I think I have enough of those pretty other side, but basically just if you go down River Street, first you're by Beards Lumber, then you're by Nolan. And then the next developed piece of property is 450 Mill Rock Road. Which is adjacent to the subject properties here. And is the only access to their, to their, those properties. As stated in the application. These properties have been identified as industrial properties on the assessors records. And the, actually, the, the use of this particular piece of property goes back many, many years from the LeMay family. Which owned that property in the 50s and forward. And the, this piece of is 62 and that piece is been used as a commercial industrial site since the, since the 50s. It was used by LeMay as a lay down yard. And that was a term not familiar to me, so I'm going to have Steve Bogin explain to you what a lay down yard is.
The record of Stephen Bogin. Good evening. So when we bought this property in 2004, we acquired it from the LeMay family. It was still an operational construction facility. And that piece that we're discussing right now was an area where they put all their surplus materials. And if you look at the topography, you can see that some of it is still in the top left hand corner. From a 2011 survey for topography that we did. So this has always been under usage as a storage facility. I own a company Blastall Incorporated in Old Sandbrook. That is one of our storage facilities for construction, build out bridges. But I also use the other property, which is on the other side, with the same usage. We store surplus materials on two pieces of this property. That's why this one here is in conflict because it's in a residential zone. And we didn't, we didn't know that till recently. And I went to Chris Costa and she brought it to my attention. That the adjacent property had been residential at one time and brought forward, and correct me if I'm wrong. She noted that it was residential and was brought forward in the town to be converted to industrial. So we believe that we should ask to do the other two parcels and make it all contiguous. So there's no buildup going on here of any sort. We're trying to get in the right tax base here because, you know, we're being taxed for 21 years for industrial, but it's really two residential lots. So really, our biggest problem is we just got to clarify this. And that's pretty much why we're here tonight, really. If it's any questions, I'll answer them.
Thank you. The, as you're aware, the statutory referral of any map change, zoning map change, or regulation change gets referred to the Planning Commission for the purpose of it making a determination whether the proposal is consistent with the plans of conservation and development. And the, I went through your updated fairly recent plan of conservation and development, then as you might expect, it doesn't specifically address where properties may have been indirectly put on the map as residential where it should not have. But if it does. This is part of the group one corridor. Which the plan of conservation and development says that it should be strengthened. It's a, this particular end of the Boston Post Road. And River Street is an offshoot from it. Is one of those areas that needs to be strengthened. And one of the ways to do that is to have a property, piece of property which is being used as a lay down yard. Is zoned industrial so that that is a use that is appropriate for it. So we hope that the commission will give a favorable referral to both of these applications, both of these properties. And be happy to answer any questions you might have regarding this application or these applications.
Yeah, Attorney Royston, so it says in the application disclaimer being listed on the assessors cards as being in the industrial I zone. But all the assessor cards that I had access to, even copies in the package, have it as AA, as residential. I didn't see any reference to industrial zone in any of the paperwork in the online. It's on the GIS mapping. That's so.
I looked on the mapping, it's all residential. It's all yellow, AA1.
There is, it is that, but we're being, if you look at the GIS cards, we're, it's, they're calling it industrial. But it's mapped as a residential.
Okay, I did not see that with GIS cards. If they're in the package.
So, so for clarification, the online GIS, if we do go on, there is on the mapping, there is a disclaimer for the GIS. When this came up and there was the difference in the mapping, I did mention this to the assessor. So if you just look at something online, it may have been corrected to reflect what the actual zone is. So often, or not often, at times we find that there's errors in the GIS mapping calling something industrial that's residential and so forth, and we bring that to the attention of the assessor. So really what we're looking at, and I don't want to get into the assessment and the taxing issues. Is the property obviously was, the properties were owned by the LeMays. They were transferred to Mr. Bogin when he purchased them and they were just not zoned all industrial. They were industrial and residential.
So you have one. This is McCracken, which I'll pass down to you. I had a difficult time finding it because it's just a little notation on the assessors card up at the top, so.
Yeah, I think I looked up a copy of that. It's, it's almost like it's blurred out a little bit, but when you look at the online version, it says AA1. That's, that's what I was struggling with. So, yeah, this does say I won. And so Chris, are you saying they were zoned industrial?
So zoning and assessments are different. I mean, we're not going to get into the taxes. You have the zoning map, which is the official zoning map. The zoning map and the previous zoning maps have his property or these properties as AA1, even though going back to, and I don't have any really history in the file as to what the LeMays use the AA1 for. Obviously, they've been used even from the configuration and the aerial photos of the driveways and so forth as kind of one parcel, even though they were three. Two of those three parcels are AA1 and not industrial. So the, an issue came up and Mr. Bogin and I started talking about it. And I said, well, these properties are zoned AA1, not industrial. So the assessor is not the official holder of the zoning map, it's the zoning commission. And that's the zoning, so I did alert the assessor that the AA1 properties that she had listed as industrial, just to clarify that that's not what was on the zoning map.
Were they changed to AA1 in the provision of the zoning map, or they always been AA1 on the map? It's the history of like, how did we get here?
They've been AA1 on the map, they weren't changed to the best of my knowledge. It was most likely a non-conforming use back to the LeMays in the 1950s. I didn't do the history back to 1950 or whenever they ended up purchasing the property or their use. And the file really doesn't say too much about all of the uses that are, that are currently there. It doesn't mean that they're not legally existing, pre-existing, non-conforming uses. I don't want to get into that. I just trying to relate that this is really a map issue, zoning map. And granted, I understand the applicant's point with what it says with the assessor's car and potentially being zoned is being, or taxes being industrial, but we're here to look at a referral from the zoning commission to change the AA1 properties to industrial.
Right, and the what we haven't talked about is it's changing a part of a residential district to industrial. So are we coming out of the blue and changing it to industrial? And the impact that has on the, the rest of that zone? That's the
Thank you.
Yeah, I can address that. Decision, and when you talk about the plan of conservation and development, you know, it talks about community character, you know, the neighborhoods and people buy houses based on the zoning maps, knowing they have a, a zone of protection, if we want to call it that, around them, so.
If you, if you go by, first of all, the piece, the triangular piece which goes up as fronting. That is inaccessible. It's, it's referenced there to speak bank. And so certainly the people on the other side of River Street have a protection from any activities here, number one. Number two, the property on River Street West, there's a, they also backed off to that that wetlands area property. They're residential. And this lot is very narrow. 62 and would, its use requires a permit from the wetlands. And that it's very narrow and that this use basically, I think, should be industrial because it's it just doesn't make sense to have the, the three industrial properties and one property that was used by the May family for years and years. Treated residential where, as Attorney Love notes in his application, you can't, it's non-conforming as far as being a residence. I'm sure nobody would go on a residence at that location.
Well, I'll just add, so I did walk down, I, I drove by the property and scoped it out. So the lot 25, the long one, the south, there's storage on the north end of it. Which is fairly protected with the triangular piece there. But the southern part of that long strip backs up to, I believe it's the Roy property. It's right behind the Roy property and we change it to industrial, basically, they've got an industrial zone right behind their, their lot.
Can I speak or resist? I don't know. I am, so I own the property that next to it. I'm
Okay, I'll leave it to the chair.
Yeah, well, okay. I'll give you my fair speaking of it. Okay.
Yeah, so I just wanted to bring that, bring that out. It's, you know, I understand the long piece, storage on the north end, but the south end, but are the resident, existing residents, so it's just something we need to consider.
You do have on that side outside of River Street, three large active commercial industrial allowed uses. And it makes sense, I think, for something that doesn't isn't going to be a residence, that it be given a zoning classification or it could be used.
But it also provides a nice buffer between that and is it correctly zoned industrial?
The
If we left it as AA1.
If you, it's still a buffer. Because
I don't know what they start putting in there.
Well, there's still, because you have the wetlands one right up, right up to it.
Well, that's another issue, I would think, is that if you have leftover construction material near weapon, what's the wrong?
There is to leave there is pending before wetlands a violation. Or what's going on? And the applicant, instead of contesting that and having to claim that it is an illegal existing use has said, okay, I will seek to have the property changed to industrial. And this passes, it will go in for a they will have to keep the separation distances. They'll have to make sure that there isn't an environmental problem.
Any other comment from the commission? I think there are similar concerns that I have here, it's, we'll probably go both of them half a mile of the transition. The problems with like transit oriented development areas. And looking at the long term of how we want the town to develop. Taking away residential properties in an area that we are targeting as to more residential, doesn't seem like it's consistent with the plan of conservation.
Okay. When you say you're taking away residential land. That property is not usable for residential purposes, A. And I doubt anyone would want to have a residence there. Because it is just right next to, and has been historically part of a non-residential use. So I, I think it's having it zoned, what it is. And it isn't taking away any residential property, as soon as if you're seeking to have property which could be developed for residential purposes.
At this time, we don't know in the future, we're taking away two lots that are residential that we decided at some point as a town in the past, those should be residential. Taking that use out and now this own industrial is going to be much more difficult to ever make them a house. Totally depends on the future. So as, as the planning commission, look at what is the future plan, the future uses of their plan? I don't think adding more industrial is consistent.
Well, I think that under your plan of conservation and development, it specifically say the businesses on the group one quarter. And this is part of them. And here's a, an applicant who is coming in and asking you to change the property to what its use is. And is a few, and I agree with them, should be because it isn't going to be used for residential purposes. So that's, that's your plan of conservation and development, strengthen those businesses. And I think that the downside taking residential property of residence is not, not a hindrance because I don't think it would ever become residential.
Well, it is residential. It might not be a rebuilt up, but it is residential. Yeah. How, how it was used, doesn't matter. It is zoned residential right now.
Well, I only think how it was used is relevant to this application. Because they're seeking to have a property which has been used for over
A long times.
Over seven. Have you?
With that?
Yeah, so
Do you want to say your name?
Sure. My name's Michael Roy. My wife and I bought that property, 76 dash two, Bridge Street West. We've been at Old Sabre for 10 years now. The reason why we bought that property, we lived on King Street, yeah, in Parthenon Diner, which is a nice area, but we just had our first child, she's a year old now. And we wanted something that was on the end of the cul-de-sac in a residential area. So I'm sure you, you know, you all are familiar with Old Sabre, the home prices in this town are astronomical. There, you know, a lot of money. So for a family to buy a house in this town, you know, just, and we're not talking about mansion, we're talking 23, 24, 300 square foot house. You're spending between $750,000 and a million dollars on a house. We spent a lot of money in a house that we had completely gut and renovated. So we, we put all our money into this house. And the reason why we moved from, we had a nice house on King Street, but we wanted to get out of the route one and, you know, Parthenon Diner. The reason why we bought this house and how it was sold to us was that this was a nice residential cul-de-sac. We're looking into the marsh, we have the Red Rock Creek Preserve there. So I feel like this is almost like, like a bait and switch, not intentionally maybe, but it's like, hey, come and spend all your money on, you know, we're going to put all this money into this house. Because we have the wildlife here and now my concern is now you want to put, you know, we have one year old, right, want to have another, another child. We don't want commercial traffic or commercial property or being built and literally our, you know, this would border our backyard. And that's, that's what, you know, our concern is. And I think some of our neighbors have the, the same concern as well. And then the last thing I'd say is, you know, another reason why, what the realtor, when they were selling us this house, they sold us on, you know, all the wildlife. If you look up your backyard, you have ospreys and eagles and there's all kinds of bird life and there's bobcats and deer. We see them, you know, to go to go ahead and just put a commercial, I don't know what the plan is, but my concern is now you're going to put commercial materials or storage and now instead of looking at what we, you know, why we bought the house, now we might potentially be looking at some kind of commercial storage or commercial use. And it's also a small piece of property. You have our property, Judd is my neighbor, and then you have the condos on the back of Ultra Street. So they, they, this would be right in the middle of my prop, our properties here of River Street West. And then you have those condos in the back of Ultra Street. And those are all, again, it's high-end real estate. Those are all, I think one just sold her one, two or something like that. It's more high-end real estate. And then you have, I think there's a couple of them in the back of Bird Street too. Bird Street, they said, right, that it would kind of be in the middle of all these residential areas. So that, that was my concern for it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Justin Jones. And my properties, I'm, you look at the map on twenty-three dash three, which majority of that sixty-six, well, actually the sixty-sixth River Street or twenty-five dash one is my backyard. I brought it up to. My main concern or question is what is the reasoning for changing the zoning on this piece of property that is all wetlands that can be nothing to be done with? I, I feel that we get a change to industrial and down the road, we're going to spread a sneak in and make that property a little bit bigger. I've lived in this house for forty-seven years. And already it has snuck in and made that property a little bit bigger by bringing in material and crossing the material. There's a, there's a pile of dirt higher than this room in the backyard and that just keeps sliding in to this wetland area. That's my concern.
Thank you. Either of you, I have many comments?
Joyce McCoskey, ninety-sixth River Street. I just wanted to say that if you know where this is, this is extremely busy area. All right. As you pull in, you have the CBS across the street, you have the lumberyard, you've got the Ford place, you've got the industrial park. We have a lot of young children in this area. We have lots of wildlife in this area. It's pretty scary to think we're going to make it easier than ever. There's always an accident there. Always an accident there. And I think it's real, even though we are way down the end of the road, speaking for my neighbors, I think it's very unfair. And bought property thinking it was residential and that area around you was residential. And all of a sudden you have this come to you. Just not fair.
Is there anyone online that has any comments? So can you raise your hand?
Nicole.
Hi, I'm Nicole Fanoff and I live at seventy-four River Street. And I bought the house a few years ago, just maybe two or three years ago. And, you know, it really, I'm like right next to, I'm, I'm next to Judd like in the, the front, you know, part. And it just really is upsetting because, you know, I, I love the wildlife and I also you know, have pets and I have nephews that come over and, you know, to have an industrial zone right next to my house is really upsetting. Knowing that I just bought it, you know, a couple of years ago. And I really love this neighborhood and I walk my dog all the time. And honestly, when I go up to the industrial park, you know, it is quite busy up there. And to know that that could come closer, you know, to all of us. And it is a little bit nerve-wracking because those trucks that are parked over there and, and guys that are always there at different hours of the day. It's, it's not always at, at, you know, business hours. It just, it just puts a, an interesting, you know, feel up, you know, near that industrial park and, and we don't know who's there. And I know my neighbors have young children and they ride, you know, their bikes and, and stuff. So, you know, it's just upsetting to know that this could actually be zoned as industrial. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Anyone on the commission? Any questions or comments?
You'd like to say anything to, if you don't mind, please. Mr. Roy. Let me just explain something that we bought that place in two thousand and four. Before you moved in, the activities has always been the same. Nothing has changed. There's no future development. Everybody's speaking as if we're building this new model here. This model's been going on since I bought it. It's nothing has changed. The problem is we're in a residential zone that, and we're in a non-conforming use right now because it's grandfathered. And we want to establish the right thing here. So, I mean, everybody's got to get on the same track because nobody's really quite understanding. There's no re-development or, or build out or anything else. We have another yard right on the other side of here that's doing the same thing. It's a place where we put our construction materials and we work on it. So what you really got to think about is you can't build a house on it. It's not conforming. But we've been taxed since two thousand and one as a residential lot. We're trying to get this thing legitimately on the town record to be industrial. Doesn't matter if it's residential, we can't build that, can't do anything. But we're not getting taxed fairly on it either. So, you know, this is what we've got to decide on. I'm open for ideas. Now, why I'm here, I'm going to suggest is one of the committee members years ago asked me for a right of way from that front corner down to go off into the dump for a walking trail. Now, we all proposed this, we, we've talked about this. That was an option that I was willing to work with. So I'm here, I'm not going to develop the property. I'm willing to give back that walking space. Because everybody thinks that we're in this grand illusion that we're going to put a mega mall in or eight thirty G or whatever. We just want to go on with our basic operation that we've been doing there. And it, it shows right there in that two thousand and eleven survey that those piles of dirt were still there up until that point. So we're not having change anything. The only thing we did, we bring top soil in, we take it out. We bring barrier in, we take it out. Trucks come in, trucks come out. It's, it's an ongoing process, all daytime operation. I don't know what else to say. I mean, I hope everybody is taking a ride down there. I think I did a pretty good job of redeveloping a really crappy area. I bought that all up and I cleaned it up and it's getting good utilization from the town. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Chairman, there's another.
Okay.
Erica? Erica?
This is Frank Cessenza. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Eric and I live at eighty-one Colter Street and we're in the condos that were being referenced earlier. Our concern is more so what the future would be, as he was just talking about the current use. But if you change the zoning, what potentially could be there in the future? And I, I, I know there is piles of dirt there now and dirt coming in and whatever coming out. And we can hear that already from here. And this is just going to bring it closer to our neighborhood. So I just want to say we're against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Decision on the referral? Yes.
Chairman.
Yes.
If there's true applications of revision.
We'll vote on several, please.
Thank you.
Still waiting for motion, looking for motion. Yes, the petition to amend the Old Saver zoning map, this is for River Street. Remove it from Residence AA one district to the industrial I district. The coastal area management zone and that river gateway conservation zone. I get a motion to approve?
Is that a motion or are you looking for a second?
I'm looking for a second.
Okay, now a second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Aye, opposed, abstained. Thank you.
Reposed? Okay, so you approved that and Doug seconded.
So the motion was to approve.
Yep.
Doug seconded. And it was negative.
All the way.
Vote for all the seated members. So the motion.
Did not.
Didn't that?
Okay, I'm sorry. So everyone denied it?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
It's fine. Petition to amend the Old Saver zoning map, sixty-sixth River Street, assesses map forty-nine, lot twenty-five dash one from Residence AA one to District to the industrial district coastal area management zone. Motion to approve?
I'll second it.
All those in favor? All is opposed? Any abstains? Thank you very much.
Question. So I know you made the motion to approve it failed. This is a recommendation to the zoning commission to approve or deny, but it obviously it was denied. Would it be helpful to the zoning commission to know your reasons for denying it is inconsistent, just suggesting?
I believe it's consistent with the plan of conservation and development that we want to preserve our neighborhoods and the character of our neighborhoods.
Yeah, it's inconsistent with P O C D, community character and environmental conservation. I mean, we heard a discussion about the wildlife and in Attorney Royston, I'll turn your words around. You said, you know, there would be no residences built there. And I, and I agree because I saw the property. There's no way you could build residences there. But you said you would want to be next to an industrial zone. And that was the point this gentleman made is he doesn't want to live next to them. So it's that residential. So because I'm grandfathered and I've been doing this, we're going to keep on going with our operation. Nothing changes. I mean, I'm, I'm putting this out for the record that right now we, we haven't done anything wrong. And what we'll do is we'll keep our operations going the same. But my next question is going to be, is it fair to ask for money back on the taxes that we pay? Because I believe that we're paying more an industrial base. And if you're going to leave it residential, I think there's a twenty-one year credit coming back to us, not in cash, but in credit.
You have to take a.
I know, I understand, but I'm just putting that on the record. So, you know, we're trying to do the right thing here. But I don't care which way we go. We opted to do the right thing. We're still going to keep doing what we're doing because we're not going to develop it. And we're conforming to our usage as an industrial area. So just want to put it on the record so we understand that. Okay. So I guess what committee do we go to next to ask for some type of abatement or readjustment?
It's up to zoning now that they've heard from all the different commissions to make a decision.
Yeah.
So it has to stormly approve it or deny.
Right. But I mean, you, you put yourself in my shoes. I mean, you're paying the town's got listed one thing here and another there. And I'm just trying to be fair about it all. We're just trying to put on an equal playing field. That's all we're doing.
Yeah.
Okay. We have a new town on a tax assessor, right? Was that, yes, that's my next step tomorrow. Yes. So these, this, this meeting was recorded so I can have her go back and listen. Thank you.
Can I have you rephrase what you were citing? Just so when I put it into the referral, you're, which part of the?
I can follow up with your.
That would be perfect.
All right, thanks. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. This is a process. Now, moving back and zoning is going to seize this and zoning is, well, it matters.
So, so I guess the reason I was asking for you to clarify the reason, so you typically would filter and say
Yeah, right.
The petition to amend is consistent or inconsistent by approving it, it's consistent. So when you have something and you have a motion to approve that didn't carry the report we would send to the zoning commission is they went to deny it. Sometimes the zone, it's helpful to the zoning commission to understand why you denied it is inconsistent with the plan of development.
Right.
So that, that's why I said, is there any way? Because what will happen is we'll send a report to the zoning mission. So in a situation where you send a favorable report, it'll say the application is consistent with the following goals, policies, sections of the plan of development. In this case, the approval didn't deny. You could also go through and, you know, make a motion. You know.
I shouldn't have made the motions to deny.
You can, you can do it either way.
Don't ask before, and we were corrected, I believe, by an attorney that you made the motion to approve it and then you voted down.
But I agree with what you're saying. I should have had.
But I think that Karen could go through to send a negative referral
Yeah.
to the commission and attach what was discussed in the minutes to support it.
Yes, that's what we wanted. Yeah, and we'll.
Because you didn't add it into the motion. So you just go through and say, the you know, for reason, you know, reasons discussed during that and there's a attachment that. Because it's not technically the motion. So. Turkey.
Someday I'm going to hang it.
It's tricky even to record that.
Okay. Shall we move on? And by housing task force review of the twenty twenty-one affordable housing plan in the subcommittee reports. Before we go there, just want to sort of bring a sort of update on what's been going on within the state. All that other fun stuff.
So as you're aware, the planning commission and our two representatives from zoning and the Borough Fenwick, we have a requirement for an affordable housing. And we're on year four. It's a five-year plan. We started getting things together for updates. We have our housing task force, which was one of the the actions. You're the housing task force and tasked with also updating the plan. Well, with the most recent bill that has not been signed, there's some changes to the affordable housing plans. And, and there's a few ways that he can proceed. First of all, this would go, the new law, when signed, if signed, would remove the requirement from the town and you could have this plan done by the region. And I'm, I'm giving you the very kind of cliff notes.
Is there an option for the town? I think we would opt out of one.
And no, I believe we can, so the thing is the region can do the plan for us the way and, and it's still kind of brand new and it's not signed into law. So if it gets, if it's not signed into law, then we're still going ahead as planned. But I think we really kind of need to wait till something happens. If it does happen, you put a lot of time and effort into this. And I know we've talked about calling this not just a affordable housing plan, a housing plan. And we were updating it because there was a mandatory requirement to do this for the town. So if the bill is signed and it becomes law, the commission can say, okay, we're going to go through, you're still going to have to do affordable housing related tasks. And it's all new. So it's not as though anybody has the magic answer to how everything's going to work. It's brand new. If it's passed, you could go through and say, okay, maybe we do want to defer to the region to help us. But there's no reason you couldn't continue with your housing plan for the town. So, you know, the thought is, do you want to take all the hard work that you put into meetings and so forth? You're still going to want to continue with actions. I think our initial housing plan, even though it was called an affordable housing plan, did address some housing that was not affordable. So do we want to continue and just have a housing plan regardless of what happens with this signature on this new law, if it happens?
So Chris, if we revised the affordable housing plan to be a bigger housing plan, would that replace the residential development section of the?
There's separate plan. So what you're working now is a housing task force.
Okay. Okay, would would a revise, this new plan we're talking about go into the P O C D? As a revised section, because otherwise now we've got stuff in two places.
We currently do have it in two places. So the. I I mean, I guess the thing is, we we could do that, and then we would go through and make the housing plan the section of the residential development plan. Um, but I thought what the commission was looking to do as a housing task force was to take the affordable housing plan every five years, update it, call it the housing plan, and I agree with what you're saying, you have the residential development section. Um, but or you can keep the residential development section and kind of.
Have another one on this.
Have another one inside or just abandon it if it's not required and go and work with the region.
Right, but under the old law, that we're required to have two separate lands.
You're required to have an affordable housing plan under eight thirty J, so it kind of sounds like eight thirty J may disappear and become a regional housing plan. But Old Sabre could still have input. So.
Right, and.
I I mean, I think we still need to proceed and go forward because this is not a law yet, because we said, okay, we're not gonna go forward, but we have to think of what could happen if this becomes law and if it would go regional.
And.
And previously, we opted out of the regional plan, right? We did the Sabre plan and the River Club went ahead with, I think it was like fourteen of the seventeen towns. Joined in.
So so you you correct.
So I would advocate, we continue with our own plan.
Wouldn't we be able to opt out?
Opt out.
Of the regional plan.
In all honesty, this is so new, I don't know the 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 answer, and I think it's. You know, it's due, and I'll be honest, I haven't read the entire bill because it just kind of popped up, I started reading it, it's. Not like reading, um, and sometimes there's gonna be with any bill, there's gonna be gray areas, they become the law, and everybody looks at each other and says, does that mean this, or does that mean them? So.
We gotta wait to see what the final bill looks like. Before we make any real formal decisions. But. Chris and I were talking about this, and I think that we should continue to go forward. Because when and if. The region, well, the regional plan. Does adopt this and assign someone to do. A affordable housing plan. They can use what we have as our input. So we have a say into what's being dictated for Old Sabre, because they're not gonna be able to say. One thing for every area because you got Middletown, you know, and then you got Middlefield and Durham, so it's. It's gotta be. More cohesive, so I think we should continue with what we're doing.
And I'll add, uh, so Mike and I sit on the regional planning committee where this is. Probably be debated in the future, they tend to be. Higher level and it should kind of en- envelop what we come up with, but we need to make sure that.
Yeah.
We need to leverage them, but we don't want to be constrained by.
By that, correct.
Yeah, not entirely.
No, and I don't think we should.
Right.
And I think. When we go to revise the P O C D, we make sure that our housing plan and the P O C D are in alignment. So that there isn't, yeah, we might have two separate documents, but they're basically saying the same thing.
And I mean, you also, when you get to that point, could make the decision. To say, so right now you have your housing task force hat on.
Right.
Now the planning commission had on, but you're still the planning commission as well, you could also. Just say, let's amend the plan of development to remove residential development and replace that section, I mean, that's a ways off, we're still trying to figure out. If the eight thirty J plan is still gonna be required, but we can deal with that, I think, down the road, but. You know, the the one thing is, if it does become a regional plan, and I've discussed this with a few of you that in my office this week, um. That. Different towns have different perspectives, and I think Old Sabre has been very open. To housing options and understands that there's a need for housing. Where there may be other communities in the region that don't feel the same or have different. Hurdles or less hurdles than we do, they may have sewers, they have may have met, they may have more than ten percent of their housing stock is affordable and they don't have eight thirty G in the picture, not that we're afraid of eight thirty G. But. We're all different.
But I mean, it'll come to a good example, they have their house, their affordable housing stock. Because. You got one developer out there that has developed a huge amount of affordable housing. They don't worry about, they also have sewers. A river. Uh, and how to have sewers, so we gotta think about this.
Maybe it makes sense to keep our own town plan, whether it borders with the. Plan for conservation, there's a regional plan of conservation development, and we have a town one, so they're required that. I think in the future, if we're not required to have a separate housing document, I might prefer to have a single one, but. That's not. The reality, at least as of today.
Right. Right, no, I think it's going forward, and what's gonna happen, I think, for some, I've heard of that.
I've done lots of research, went with good ideas.
It'll take us, so what's a timeframe on this, Chris, like a year or?
What?
To revise the plan to a general housing plan, what's the?
Well, that was our plan before, I think the plan is pretty much, it's a brand new plan. It's four years old, I I think we could probably get it done by the end of the summer if we. I mean, how much has really changed in four years, not a lot, I think the the one thing that's changed is we have a housing task force. We're focusing on it. The actions from the initial first official. Affordable housing plan, things of it are a little bit different, and I think we've learned a lot, and maybe. My opinion is I think the focus is gonna be updating a lot of those actions. And then also taking it from a housing plan, affordable housing plan to the housing plan as we discuss, so I mean, I think it it's not something we're gonna be sitting here for three years. Rewriting something, I think we're. We're not, we're updating it, not necessarily. Writing a new one.
Right, it's just a little bit of a moving target with Hartford and like the River Club, you know, so they're gonna be doing their thing in the next ten months, we just need to stay in sync with them.
Well, if if that's, if that's the, if that's the law.
Yeah, that's a good goal of being the expert.
And I'm saying it's likely it's gonna happen, but at the same time. Say it was a law right now, would we still want to go forward with this?
I think we do. I mean, I mean, this is due to be updated next year anyway, so we're ahead of the game.
Does it make sense to wait until the law is signed, or we have like an effective date start, or? Do we just start?
Well, if if the law is signed, it's gonna be a regional housing plan, this plan, we will need to do that, so the question is. If this goes, obviously, we're still gonna have to do or complete our task and go for and and promote housing and do all the good things we're looking to do. But. We it would just go to the region, and and I think. This committee has spent so much time. On this, and you're at a point where. Why wouldn't you finish? What you started and make it for what Old Sabre is looking for, and that obviously could also go up to the region and help the region.
Right, still up to implement it locally.
Right, right.
I think it's gonna have us stake in the ground, appears how we Old Sabre for one, have been approaching it the last four years, want to approach it the next five years. Then we cribbed a lot of all that affordable, we're up in the planet conservation, like there's a lot of data we can't. Copy some in and leverage some of that, but then, I mean, the portable house, it's just about.
Right.
They do a few options there.
Yeah, I would expect River Club to like come up with like maybe financing options or this CMRA interface, how to leverage that, you know, their.
So. You, C M D A.
Okay.
So, well, ju- just to kind of go, I mean. Going a little bit all over the place, um, so. To go through, so just, I didn't get to it yet for staff report, we're one of the fifteen towns that has been chosen for C M D A. So I've already met with C M D A, we have our hundred thousand dollar grant. That we're receiving to do the B one and the B two. The town opted in to C M D A, I met with David Corus. Who is the head of C M D A, and what they've done is they've retained a firm SLR, some of us know it from as Malone and McBrum, I believe it was back in the day. And what they're doing, they're looking in areas. Um, th- there's a little bit of repetition with what we. The C M D A is within a half a mile of the train station, it's not just affordable housing, it's all housing. And. Our project that we've already kicked off with. Uh, W S P and G and Jeff Jacobson, sorry for all the acronyms, uh, that project to study. The B one and a portion of the B two for soils. Septic analysis, looking at our regulations. The C M D A, the fifteen towns that have been chosen, they have a very similar scope, so I met with David. And we talked about, obviously, we don't want to repeat a- and have the same thing in both plans, so we would need to take a look at. The current D O H housing project that we're working on for B one, B two, then take a look at C M D A, see where the overlap is. And then modify what the town's doing for C M D A.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, that's.
We we have a lot going on, and I guess.
Karen wrote it all, yeah.
Not at all.
But I, we we have a lot going on as far as, we have a lot of good things going on. And and I think. As we go through and look at the actions, we're implementing some of those actions in the plan, they may not be exactly what was outlined in the plan initially as an action. But I think the town is moving forward. With that, and we're gonna learn more. So sorry, Doug, to interrupt, we're.
So the C M V A.
The.
D A. Is that the same, that's the Connecticut Municipal Development Authority, okay, I thought it was a redevelopment authority. Okay.
Now they changed their angle, or they changed their acronym.
So they were initially M R D A, and I still keep saying that, and people would call it Murda. And nobody liked the sound of it, so they changed it to C M D, so it's the same. Program, we opted in when it was Murda, but it's C M D A, and we're one of the fifteen towns that was chosen.
That's good, right.
So what potentially was happening is the fifteen towns we go through, and then. However, our study is tweaked, there could be another layer of study upon that to build housing, and then with that and D O H as well, you know, the first grant is our partner. I I think we're we're making progress.
Because that was the idea, they would be operating funds, if there was like certain development things based on the study that. Like might be needed to help.
Or it may be funding to add on to the study for something we need to know, but I think. We're gonna learn this as we move along, and having this parallel right now with housing study that we're working on in the B one. And working on the housing plan, affordable housing plan, I think we're. We're inching more towards implementation or getting some ideas on how better. To write our regulations or things that we need to do. So so that's where we are with C M V A.
And you reviewed the housing study with Tina and Aaron, correct?
So I have overwhelmed. Tina and Aaron and the, oh, we talked about everything from all the zoning districts to the affordable housing study to so. And I gave them a lot of homework, thank you, thank you for coming, and I'm running away, I just finished to the two zoning members, new zoning members today. So it's it's a lot to take in at once, but. They have the resources, they're welcome to come and talk to me if there's something they have questions on, so.
I haven't read over that book yet, but I'm working.
She memorized the zoning regs, that's what she told.
Well, that's good, because I hope she has the one for this property.
I know, I'm nervous.
Exactly. All right, um, so I'm gonna. I'll ask, does any of the subcommittees have anything to review?
Everyone should have something to review.
All right.
I'll check out, but several times we gotta go through the different sections, we were assigned the uh, the predictive summary. And then Chad the racer worked on Old Sabre's suit of promote. Right, because you probably work in these, because something might have to work.
Well, Michael and I have been sort of raking leaves in the windstorms as well. Um, I'll pass out what we've got. And this is a, what I would call preliminary draft. Thank you. One, two. Four.
Awesome.
Oh, and and I do, I'm gonna interrupt for a minute too, so um. We had talked about having Taike, who did the original affordable housing plan at this meeting. And then with the new law, it didn't really make sense, either way, I think, depending on what we do. We continue with them, we can take all of this and help us to get into that draft that John and I met last week, and he's like. Does this even make sense, what's gonna happen, so John's not here tonight because it didn't seem. To make sense, depending on which way the town was gonna go, if the bill was gonna be signed, and so. So. Anyway, sorry to interrupt.
That's fine, Chris, interrupt all you like, um. I think I put that in words, somewhere in here. Um, I've said that, uh, where did I put that? Yeah, I mean, we'll start back to the beginning, where did, Michael and I are not done. Um, it seems to me that the uh, the existing uh, housing plan. Uh, shouldn't ever be scrapped, needs to be edited, amended, plagiarized, is maybe another another word that I could use. And so I got started on this with my, and there's essentially four paragraphs that could sort of lay out. A little bit of history and what we've been doing, and then there at the bottom of the sheet, which I I hope we can leave the comment on. Are essentially bullet points, uh, these are things that we've discussed through the years, we may not have all of them down here, there's a significant amount, there's six or seven pages of stuff that come out of the existing plan. Uh, notes that I've made, uh, suggestions by by Michael. I've all sort of taken the forty thousand foot view of what's going on, I'm a newbie. Um, I'm uh, envious of the abilities in this group. To work with sometimes intractable issues, so we still have work to do, but we felt we needed to submit something to at least get a a C or a D mark. To get a start. Um, but somewhere in here, and I'm sorry, I can't find it now, uh, here it is. Just as the current task force is completing its work, the state legislature will be discussing what I think is H B eight zero zero two. An act concerning housing growth, a revised version of H B five oh two, which the governor vetoed in June twenty twenty-five, if those bills pass, it may affect what recommendations asked there should make. I'm I'm roughly right there, Chris, am I not, in terms of the the House bills, I still don't quite understand what the sequence is and where they are.
So right now, we're waiting for the governor to sign into law or not to sign.
Which one?
Eight zero zero.
Eight, eight zero zero.
The other one was not signed into law, the first.
Okay, so why is the, for example, the Connecticut Mirror, to diverge a little bit, uh, I rely on sometimes to understand what's going on. Up the street. Uh, why are you talking about a session in February? Am I missing something, you seen that?
I I, you never know what's gonna happen.
Okay, alright.
So this session, I mean, it was discussed, it kind of popped up quickly. And then with the new text. And um. You never know what's gonna happen, so there could be. It's.
And the governor is expected to sign it? We don't know.
We don't know. But I I just wanted to, you know, as we got into this discussion, make everyone aware and just see if we have a consensus as to what we're doing, if we should continue doing it. Or if that's what this commission wants, committee commission wants to do. It's just so we have, we're planners, we get a plan, if the bill is approved, it gets denied, where are we going?
I think I think it's good, even if the outcome of the document is sort of just a summary of the work we did over the last five years, of like. We had a plan for five years, we did a study for a year, here's sort of our. Recommendations of whether it's an ongoing thing or not, we can just have it, I mean, one of the challenges I thought with the executive summary targeting or revising the predictive summary before the rest of the document. It'll be revised.
Well, this is true.
So there's some of those, but it's like, yeah, what, kind of like the reiterated things, it's like, that's summarize what we did over the last year, we're talking about some of the updates. So it's some of these details and the history of kind of like how we got to where we are now, and then obviously would include in. What have you updated or changed, high level goals we talked about, we kind of go in there.
So one thing. Um, is I actually do already have it. Somewhat done. Um. For for a few reasons, just to track what we've done, if anyone asked about it. Um, and then it also included, you know, a number of the things, the C M D A, the housing grant, so I. So I do have a timeline in that and the thought was, and I've had it and I've been working on it for a while. Because it really, but I related it to the action list. Which no one got his homework. Um, partially. Because the thought was to see, when Nick and I initially talked about it. Just kind of the general feel for each of the sections and be like, wow, why would we say that? And I, I, executive summary is a hard one. That's why you see how it bounced around, like, who wants to do the table of contents? So it's. Um, so. That was, that's in the works, so.
That's good, okay, I think that'll be sort of important and then. Yeah, I think the executive summary is really. Yeah, I mean, and then. I don't think, I know I put some notes down for, they just sort of, or. Chapter eight here, I know one of the things in that are like, what can Old Saver do to promote housing access? Like one of the first things in there, like the housing task force. And I thought it might be good, this is an issue we have for YouTube chargers. Should we revise and like fully define what is the housing task force, like mission and goal, especially if it's now more than just affordable housing, sort of all, you know, housing sort of like, but. You know, more like a structure or a, you know, a charge for the next, whatever the next housing task force is, whether it's us or some new, new committee to be fair. I also thought, you know, it might be good if even like sort of track. Inventory and types and goals of housing, so not just. Total units, but really on like how many one, two, three, four bedroom units do we have in town, based on how many people we have, like. How many do we need of those different sizes, so if we're looking at. Making zoning changes, if we need more two bedroom units, then let's zone for that versus four bedroom units. Look at it more granularly versus, you know, how it's, that's sort of the, that's what the entire housing goal here. And I watched some of the gaps, I think we heard about. There, you know, we're, we're missing those smaller units. You have those households, they're shrinking, but houses are not. And then just, you know, really sort of, you know, lead into the transit stuff, which kind of lends to some of the CMBA area, I think, I think, I think, I think, I think, lots of bikes. You know, for, and then, that area, get connected in that town center area. But you could also like increase somehow the density without increasing cars by making it more block full and make it more.
And I, I just need to add one more thing to what Michael was saying, I, I. Sorry, I seem to have the last word frequently. In the previous plan, there's a section, I think it's in eight, simply making a goal or vision statement is virtually useless without a plan for implementation or accountability for action. That scared me a little bit. Um, that I hadn't been aware that, that, that statement existed, um, that I read. I was asked all of you, um, if the other. Subcommittee, subgroups can submit their information so that we can fold this in. Would you all like a executive summary to be much larger than just a few paragraphs? We could go on pages and pages. Without taking the wind out of anybody else's sail. So that people who enter into this document, look at the executive summary and say, okay, I sort of get it, oh, this is interesting, maybe I can go look at some other section. We could reduce this to a single page or we could keep going. And I think we need a little bit of direction, think about it and, 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 why can we know? Do the best we can. Yeah, when I looked at the, uh, different chapters, even though I had, only had two, there's a lot of over. So I think it can be consolidated to. Maybe more than just an executive summary, but just a, a few chapters, so. You know, but where, where are we going and how are we gonna get there? That's sort of my question, is the executive summary, should that be in the executive summary?
Right, well, yeah. Executive summary is the executive summary.
I don't think it should include everything, it should be, you know, like a one pager.
Yeah.
So I.
But we could get it.
But I think.
Yeah.
Part of this exercise is to kind of go through, so. This committee didn't write this plan, you obviously have learned a lot, you've been focusing on the plan. So this is, okay, maybe there is too much overlap, so. My thought. This is obviously your plan, was to kind of take everybody's input together. Run away with it. And try to work with our consultant. To try to fix that in and bring back something back to you to say, okay. Subcommittee one found there was too much overlap, subcommittee two found this, and then we could work a little bit more. On our implementation and our goals and kind of pull that together and say, okay. From what we've gotten just from these subcommittees. We think the executive summary is too short or it's too long, or there was too much focus and now that this is gonna be a housing plan, there was, we didn't focus on. Houses that weren't necessarily de-restricted affordable, so it's however you want to frame this, but that was. Kind of where we were. We were thinking. And from the staff level of how to go through and it also. This exercise forces you to focus, it reads something a lot of times. As these. To just learn this week, you, you get a lot of documents you go through, you know, I mean, how many times, when was the last time you read the plan of development? From beginning to end, or this plan, so it's also a way to get everybody thinking about it, so just. However you want to go, but just throwing that out there.
Right. As far as subcommittee number two goes, I do not have anything to report back, I apologize for that.
Okay, so three, Dennis and I, it comes together here. So chapter three is, um, what is affordable housing, you know, kind of defining housing needs. Um, so we need to expand the definition to include. You know, beyond the definition of affordable, which is the. You know, eighty percent income, no more than thirty percent, it should include, uh, senior housing, smaller units and housing options for younger families and workers. Maybe they're not at that low income threshold, but should include everything. It should include, um. The, uh, definition to quote, too much house. It's referenced in the P O C D. So we can pull that into this plan and that is, if you have a very large house. You know, twenty rooms and you're not using them all, well. Split it in half and let somebody else use half of it. So we can pull that in, um. There's another new law, uh, Public Act twenty-three dash one thirty-seven that talks about accessibility for individuals with developmental disabilities. And that is required to be in the housing plan, in the revision after that law was passed. So it's Public Act twenty-three, so it was. Put into effect in twenty-three, right after this was published. Um. The market assessment data all needs to be updated, you know, including the number of ADUs, uh, created since this was published. And the recent trends and housing diversity, um. And as well as the, uh, income metrics, um, they, they'll need to be updated and I'm sure Ty goes. Be looking at that, uh, chapter six. Isn't, uh, how does Old Saver provide for affordable housing? So it should, we can add the implementation of a town's newer housing initiatives. Including the housing task force, this overlaps, you know, obviously with your executive summary.
What, like, what section A was the, what can we do to promote that? So, yeah, it sounds like great. You're so. And providing are very similar.
Yeah, so we could formally incorporate the, this. Task force mandate, maybe outlining the role in assessing needs, identifying sites and collaborating with external partners. If that's what we're gonna do. Um, integrate the. CMDA. Um, how they can help us facilitate projects and we get that grant, which is great, so. And then also, um. We need to include the detached ADU regulations that were passed after this was published. So it used to be the ADU had to be attached, now it can be detached, but not got passed in twenty twenty-two. Um, we can talk about how to leverage, uh, funding, you know, external housing trust fund programs. I think that's, that's a key piece. And then also, um. Incorporate environmental resiliency in the, um, coastal resilience and adaptation study and the hazard mitigation plan, we gotta pull all these plans on. Uh, you know, it talks about prioritizing development in suitable areas and green infrastructure, so we, we do that. By nature, we're not gonna build it, you know, right, we're not gonna load up Chaka Beach with, you know, units, but we need to, we need to reference that.
Tiny houses.
I have it. And, um. Just looking, uh. We could put some goals down, maybe for ADU creation, I think you mentioned that, Mike. Um. Yeah, I think that's, uh. That's pretty much it.
But that makes some of the love to overlap between six and eight in terms of.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's why I say, I think these chapters could be consolidated.
Well, I'm just looking at just the title.
Even chapter seven.
Yeah, well, I just think the title of the chapter is, what is affordable housing and if it's a housing plan or. Does that even, should that chapter even exist or it'd be like, what is housing? And then does that kind of get rolled into chapter four, what is the current housing situation, affordable is part of that. All the, all the different types of houses, yeah. You know, affordable is more of a section out of.
Right, yeah.
If that's not the focus of the whole document, or other areas that would now make sense to consolidate, whereas affordable is now a. Part of a section versus a whole section and stuff, or maybe it's. A whole section, because it's, you know, you need to, there are, there's like legal strains requirements around providing for it.
There are certainly kind of all stood on this, I mean.
Nope, nope, those are good.
Just a quick question for the groups that are putting together papers, if you could just email those to me when you get a chance, that way I can include it in the summary that I need to.
Well, well, I'm almost kind of rethinking this a little bit, rather than having Karen do the summary. If we end up going forward, would it? Obviously, we're finding overlap, we have the suggestions and maybe we start kind of. If we're going forward. The way we plan, either way. Is that maybe this is something we can give to John's firm to kind of. Go through and take a stab at saying, okay, and, and I mean, they're gonna find that, you know, you say it's overlap, there is a lot of repetition and, and so forth. But maybe we, we target that and if we can get them working on that. We could potentially go through and start talking about. What we've done for the goals and actions, which I. Already have outlined for a number of different reasons. One of the things, going back to your initial charge. Is that we're supposed to report, I think it was in December, at some point we're reporting back to the Board of Selectmen. As to where we are with all this, even though I think they do know what we're doing, um. We did say we would report back, but I mean, I'll stop interrupting.
Wow, anything to. Report back?
Stop.
My report is, is somewhat negative in that. The. Nothing happened, nothing changed. The. Twenty-one to twenty-six Affordable Housing Plan says that, uh. Six goals were cited. To increase the number of affordable housing developments. Uh, one was to increase the number of USDA CHFA loans to over thirty-five. In twenty nineteen, there were twenty-two. Uh, out of a hundred and fifty-five designated affordable units. In twenty twenty-four, the number of CHFA and USDA mortgages is twenty, that's a decline of two. There were, uh, fifty governmentally assisted units in twenty nineteen. In twenty twenty-four, there were fifty-two. An increase of two. There were twelve, uh, ten units with tenant rental assistance in twenty nineteen. Now there's twelve as of twenty twenty-four, another increase of two. The total deed restricted units, uh, was, uh. Seventy-three, it's up to seventy-eight. And the total of, uh. All the. Affordable housing units was one fifty-five in twenty nineteen and now it's one sixty-two. An increase of seven. So the needle barely moved. If at all. Number two was to increase the total number of accessory dwelling units by twenty percent. The change in the zoning regulations to allow for ADUs as a right. Did impact the number of, um, accessory dwelling units or, as they're called in our regs, accessory apartments. And that went to, uh, increase by seventeen, yeah?
I believe it was that, I, I don't know off the top of my head, I.
And, but, but.
I was waiting for you to report, I wasn't ready for my statistics, but I, I think that sounds about.
Their market rentals, I don't think they have any, uh, affordability component. Uh, in there, because the statute specifically prohibits requiring ADUs to be deed restricted affordable. You can make them deed restricted affordable, but they can't be required. They might also be naturally occurring affordable housing, NOAA. But that's just a coincidence that the market price. Falls into an affordable rental price category, it doesn't count towards the affordable. Housing number as a total. The incentives for homeownership, that's number four and five on last year's, on the last, uh, report's goals. That was incentives for home ownership. From the Connecticut Department of Housing website, which I. Not real confident about their, um, update, but twenty twenty-four. Listed, uh, listed building grants to Old Saybrook. For a total of thirty-five thousand dollars in assistance in the last five years. But I don't think that's, that's correct. It's on their website, but I, that, so, that's what they claim.
I didn't have a chance to verify, Bob sent me a lot of things to verify and then we, which I, we, we won't look at, I know some of the. The units that have gone on the affordable housing appeals list, some of them haven't made it because it was, I was waiting to kind of group them together. Like with, uh, Hanford Commons and things like that versus updating everyone and kind of just do them in a group. But Bob did find. A number of discrepancies as to what is actually happening and. What he found, and I'm not sure, we'll, we'll investigate that thirty-five thousand.
Number five was to increase public awareness of Old Saybrook's housing efforts. And there's no formal program to encourage home buyers and home seekers. Uh, number six, the last. Was to identify a property in town for a public-private affordable housing partnership. Not identified yet, but. There's the possibility that Manners Way could be so designated. Not the best place for housing, but it might. Fulfill that number six item. Uh, so. Where, where are, what, what do we have, um? In order to reach a ten percent affordable housing out of your total number of housing units in Old Saybrook. That's often called a goal, it's not a goal, it's a benchmark, it's a number at which point the town is no longer. Uh, subject to affordable housing appeals. So that's eight dash thirty G. If we currently have five thousand eight hundred seventy dwelling units. Working with the number from River Club's housing dashboard. That would mean that we need five thousand eight hundred seven affordable units. We currently have a hundred and sixty-two. To reach five eighty-seven, we'd have to add four hundred and twenty-five affordable units. All affordable. So if we built four hundred and twenty-five units and they were all affordable. We still wouldn't quite be there because we would have increased our total housing number. It's a math balance thing, all right, in, in order to reach. Affordable housing, that's ten percent of our total in the future. Starting with the less than three percent that we still have now. We'd have to add one thousand four hundred and seventeen total units across town. At thirty percent under eight dash thirty G. To hit the ten percent number. I'm not believing that that's gonna happen. Therefore, thirty percent of any future building of housing is not gonna reach. The ten percent affordable housing goal. So I would rather not talk about that anymore and just say we need to increase housing. Overall, and we should get as many affordable units as we can possibly get. Thirty percent would be a good start, but it's still over four, uh, fourteen hundred dwelling units.
So.
It's, uh, so zoning regulations since twenty twenty-one. Changed the, eliminated the minimum building size for a dwelling to allow for smaller dwellings to be possible. Accessory apartment now includes both attached and detached units. And they're allowed as. Accessory apartment now includes both attached and detached units, and they're allowed as of right in all residence districts. Mixed-use accessory apartments are allowed in the B-one district here along Main Street. And a little bit elsewhere, and more than two dwelling units are possible when deed restrictible, affordable is included. Uh. So this was to establish residential units on non-first story floors in the town center. There is a movement to allow for residential dwelling. Everywhere, and you would lose commercial properties on the ground floor. If that is a workable part of the housing bill. So we'll see how that works out. Was zoning regulations uh would still require one parking space for an accessory apartment. That's like, don't do that from the movement that's out there, but that's where we are. The words character and characteristics were removed from eighty-nine places in the regulations. Such a subjective turn may have hindered the development of housing, for people who are opposed to it, they, they wanna preserve, preserve the character. Well, character's not in the rigs anymore, so it doesn't matter. Detached accessory apartments are not allowed on lots that do not meet a minimum acreage requirement. So even if it's a standalone detached accessory apartment. It has to go in a lot that meets the minimum lot size. Why is that? Even if there's city water, there still has to be a septic system. To handle the output of sewage from the dwelling units. So we're back to soils-based density. And I'll get back to that in a minute. Uh, let's see. We, we, we do not allow multiple driveways for accessory apartments, so that they would not impact. The, this, the, in the neighborhood to the degree that they might, if there's driveways at every accessory apartment. We uh, all that now allow an accessory apartment to be closer to the street. Than the primary dwelling to increase the opportunity to have an eight accessory apartment. On the lot, if the dwelling had a big setback. Except your dwelling could go closer to the street. Uh, so. In my, in my summation of that, relying on private development to construct housing in greater numbers. Additional changes are necessary in order for developers to make more profit building housing that we need. Rather than large, single-family homes. That's. The, the, the money driver. And so if you build smaller dwelling size. Of all types. That would hopefully increase the num, the housing supply and choices, and maybe affordability. So that's from. On the survey. In twenty nineteen, there were over three hundred responses, in twenty twenty-five, there were a hundred and eighty-six responses. We're. We need more housing. On, under both survey results. And. Old Saybrook has a number of second and, second and vacation homes. Owned by residents of other locales. And those have an impact on year-round available housing, and strangely enough, they have an impact on what. Our affordable rent is calculated at. Airbnbs in Old Saybrook rent. During the high season for high. Numbers. And even if they meet the requirement, I, if it was an affordable, uh, an accessory apartment, pardon me. Their rent per month. Pushes the rent per month average for the town higher than it would be without the Airbnb's. Even if they're not rented in the off-season, three thousand a month. Pushed for a couple of months, pushes the numbers up. And so it's important to, from my perspective, that accessory dwelling units. Be subject to the minimum duration of thirty days rent, and the owner must live on the premises where that. There's a primary residence and an accessory apartment. The. Zoning regulations have direct influence over the locations, types, and amount of housing that can be built, but it's not the sole factor. So the bill eight thousand and two. Includes a line, uh, number six hundred ninety-five, which says an inventory of developable land. Within a municipality, using the definition of developable, developable land set forth in section four of this act is necessary. That's for Old Saybrook, in my opinion, because if we have an inventory of developable lots, meaning soil capacity for septic. Then we know how much land there is available for. Greater density housing. I think that should be step number one. It's starting at a small way, in a study area where the Monkey Farm and Stage Road CBS. Eagle cleaners in that little triangle, and maybe a little bit outside that. To do a cut soils capacity study, because that for housing would also work for transit-oriented development. And TOD. Is a good concept. Then Old Saybrook should use it when it can, because. To be. To have a TOD. In Old Saybrook. That would mean that it could, we could have enhanced opportunity for eligibility to future grants. If we don't have a TOD and we don't have yours. We're not gonna get a shot at the seven million bucks that the. River Cog and others are gonna donate out in our area. So it's important to go for the TOD if we can. In order to have a chance at the grants. That will be available if we do. We gotta be near public transportation amenities and necessities. We have to do infill where we already have existing infrastructure, city water, gas lines. Close to fire and police protection, not so far from schools as it would require more school buses to travel to the far reaches of town. And. That's where the increased density should go, is where we already have the infrastructure. The town zoning in particular should consider modification of existing regulations. Uh. As an alternative to strict incentive housing style development. Incentive housing zone allows for. Six units, minimum density of six units per acre for single-family homes. Ten per acre for duplexes, and twenty per multifamily units per acre minimum. Under that IHC, the town should adopt its own flavor of the state IHC formula. And allow for increased density wherever it can go. So that's zoning is gonna consider that, we haven't done it to the degree of it becoming reality yet. I can't, I can't say we anymore, I'm, my term on zoning is up. I'm done, I'm retired, but uh, so finally, I'm saying that. Uh, perhaps some fraction of any construction of new housing must be dedicated to affordable units on a long-term basis. Well, it doesn't look, we don't look good, we did, what we did didn't move the needle, that's the sum.
We have more work to do. Alright, thank you. And uh, very, very thorough, you know, subcommittee reason, subcommittee number five is not here. So I'll move on to committee and staff reports.
So subcommittee five is not here, because you're probably figuring out how they're gonna deal with the regional plan. Make it, she's probably like, now what are we gonna do? Um, so, uh, just kind of a few things. And I'm gonna bounce a little bit off of what Bob said. Bob? So I'm gonna bounce a little bit off of what you said, even though you bumped to staff report. The ten percent, especially for the new members, is not necessarily a goal. The ten percent of the affordable housing, or your, your housing stock is affordable. Exempts you from eight thirty G. So it doesn't mean. You hit your ten percent and you're done. So just think about it that way, and, and people use it as a goal, ten percent exempts you from eight thirty G. And for a town that wants housing. It's not really a goal, it's. A way to get an exemption to go back to your normal regs. So, and we say that, and I even, I'm guilty of it too, I'm like, oh, the ten percent goal is really not a goal, it's a ten percent way to exempt yourself from eight thirty G. Um. I just wanted to bring that up for the new members, so uh, I did tell you at the last meeting, I did speak at the Department of Housing. Uh, conference in, I. Did bring up, I didn't really touch on incentive housing zone. And partially because the state model, the zoning commission had many attempts, so we never were recognized for the incentive housing zone. Uh, it appears that there may be an opportunity for the town. Um. For me to meet with the Department of Housing at some point to discuss. Maybe having some eligibility for Saybrook Station and our incentive housing programs, that's. Not gonna happen anytime this month or the next month, but maybe in the new year, but to maybe revisit the incentive housing zone, and that was something. Um, the zoning commission, as Bob was. Inferring that when we didn't get our recognition, it wasn't about money, it was about participating in the program and the work. That we did to. Get Saybrook Station and other developments developed in those regulations. So um, the zoning commission was considering having their own zone, maybe not the incentive housing zone. Incentive housing in some ways, and we'll get into it at another point, doesn't necessarily work all the time, but. It's something that maybe instead of reinventing the wheel, maybe we can keep what we have and tweak it to make it work. With all the things that have changed, like. So. Stafford. So staff report, I did mention the CMDA, just because we jumped into that. Um, we talked about the new um, bill that may soon be law. Um, the B-one, B-two study um. With the help of one of our clerks. Um, we've so far copied every survey soils data and everything in the files in the town hall. And any mapping that we've had in the B-one district, and we're almost done with the B-two to get that to our consultant, that should be wrapped up. Um, WSP and Jacobson are running with the data. Or the information we've sent them. Uh, and in, you don't have to get too crazy, you can just say it's a sunny.
I like pages of nothing, pages and pages and pages.
So, and I forget the date um. Some bird. So on December sixth. We're kind of, they're actually the WSP, fourth and sixth, the WSP team. Their traffic folks will be on Main Street, and they're gonna be. Analyzing what's happening for parking, who's parking where, doing a parking analysis, and they're also gonna be doing some traffic counting. Associated uh with our study. And I have another meeting with them, I think next Monday, so we're, we're moving. Um, as far as the data collection. Some other, everything right now is about housing, but we're gonna switch to resiliency, which is another focus, the Chapman-Chucker study um. That, I think I told you, we did get through the QAP. We contacted the neighbors. Um, everybody's doing their, their research, uh, but last Friday was deployment day. So the first six tie, or the six tide gauges were deployed. And the neighborhoods um for the start of the data collection, and we're actually at our first reporting stage, which is kind of scary. It just seems like we just started and we're reporting, and that project is moving along. The natural hazard mitigation plan, remember that? So um, we did get comments from FEMA. We sent comments back to FEMA. And we're actually having a more, a meeting uh with Rosalie on Friday, because we had received additional comments from FEMA. For some reason, it seems they're getting stuck on, on flood issues, so whether. We're gonna try to hammer that out and send it back, the good thing is we are getting responses, um, we're a little worried too, between the government shutdown and staffing, and. If FEMA would still be FEMA, or they would disappear, we're, we're actually making some movement with those. The um. Is another resiliency effort, and I know Doug uh is kind of our resiliency guy here, our representative. Um. We had talked about potentially going for other grants or resiliency grants, so. Um, I applied for a grant for Yukon for a grant writing grant, and we've been awarded fifteen thousand dollars. For our grant writer to assist us in the second phase of the great um. Great. Back River Project. So um, we're off and running on that. And there is no um. You had said something about a deadline for.
Yeah, letter of intent is due this Friday.
We're.
Okay, I have the paperwork here, we'll talk at those.
Okay, so we're.
Good.
Well, we called, uh, we called them and they said no.
Good.
So I don't know.
Maybe they waved us through that.
Or maybe, I, maybe because we have the. At natural, but we'll talk about it after. So we're making progress with that one. Um. I, I'm sure there's something else I could tell you, but it's not coming to me right now, hopefully that's enough to.
Yeah, and I'll just add that Back River Grant, oh, so that project's already at the sixty percent design phase. So you get into the, you know, the first grant is like planning, and then it's okay, get into the design, and. These grants aren't always as big as you want, so you kind of just. You know, it's like baby steps make big steps, so GZA got it to sixty percent design. So this grant, hopefully we'll get it to a hundred percent design, and then we need to implement it, and if it's. You know, then that'll be another grant, or maybe town money uh from the resiliency fund.
And. The Back River, that's.
Yeah, so what this is, is, so that huge marsh there.
Yeah.
So when that fills up, and then it drains under the Back River Bridge. It's like a jet.
Yes.
And it's jetting the land, and it's actually gonna sever off that whole peninsula.
Cool.
At the rate it's going, right, if you're under the bridge in a kayak when it's draining. Hang on, yeah, yeah.
Or if you're trying to get back, right, you can't.
You know, yeah, I mean, it's, and, and they just replaced those bridges, and. They were, you know, my understanding, they, the neighborhood advocated for, hey, you need to take a look at this, and they said, I want to not change in the scope. Really, they need a number of drains underneath the road. Instead of having the two bridges with everything going out under those, they should have a number of uh. Thousand gold birds under the road, dude. With a lot of squash.
Right, my silver lung.
Tide, tide gates.
Yeah, tide gates.
It's a bad, two bad words. Tight gate.
Yes.
I have a report from, I attended the um, October twenty-eighth meeting. Uh, oddly enough, of the Connecticut Association of Municipal Attorneys. Affordable Housing Patrick, which is essentially all we've been talking about today, right, and, and right off the bat, one of the things I would say. Uh, to you in particular, Chris, is, I was very well prepared to be there, like, I understood exactly what they were talking about. It really, it, it made a lot of sense, so I felt really well-prepared and understood what the conversations were about um. They opened up with our very own uh, Matt Puglisi, presenting for uh, DECD. Uh, which is economic development uh from the state. Um, one of the things, and I, and I won't go through obviously too many details, but one of the things really stuck out from his presentation, uh. Connecticut is both the most diverse state in New England, and the most segregated state in the country, uh, almost. So, you know, real kind of issue to, to grapple with there, uh, maybe an opportunity uh in, in the long run. Um. DECD is really interested in assisting with uh great field conversions, commercials and uh space into residential space, things, things like that. Um. The next presentation, I'll give, give these all to you, Chris, uh, was from Glassbury Housing Authority. Glassbury has about a thousand uh deeded affordable units, about thirty-five thousand people for a population. Uh, fourteen thousand housing units total, I thought. The thing that really jumped out there and, and was mentioned a little bit here today, is that of those thousand units, fifty percent. Are owned by nonprofits or for, for purpose organizations, which really goes to show, right? Um. When a, a developer spoke and, and stated that's very. When a developer spoke and stated that it's very typical for a developer to look at a thousand different potential projects and maybe choose three, you know, over, say, a year or something like that, right? So of course, a developer has, a private developer has that profit motive, a for-purpose organization has additional motives to help the community. So I thought that was really interesting. Those are the highlights.
I actually have a few things to add, and I forgot.
Okay.
Okay, just real quick. So Mariners Way, Tina left us. So we're gonna miss her, but what we're doing on the Mariners Way is we're scoping out septic capabilities, as you say, soils capability and capacity. That's gonna determine a lot. You know, we've got a lot of data from the TOD study. It sounds like you just compiled all the available data, gave it to Jacobson. We're looking to work with Jacobson to compile all that and see if any additional testing needs to be done. And then also the big thing the team is doing is outreach to property business owners to keep coming through. So that's Mariners Way, it's moving along, maybe not as fast as we'd like, but it is moving forward. And then just a reminder, we had the land use agencies meeting here, I don't know, a month or so ago, and they went over the SS for a safety action plan where Old Sabre was selected, what? One out of three, three towns were selected in the Rivercog region for Route one fifty-four, kind of from Bochum Road to Essex Road. And so that comes up at the Rivercog meetings, they talked about that. They had a, they're having their public outreach meetings. I attended one last Wednesday, but it's good old Sabre's in that. You know, and that's a good initiative, so that's it.
So I'm gonna kind of jump off of, bounce off of the SS four. I know, well, first of all, I did go to the Southern New England Planning Conference, which was pretty interesting. And I actually did go on a whole bike lane tour. I'm not a cyclist. I brought Mike a bike back this season, and I think Dennis, I should have brought you one too, you're a cyclist. But to go through and ride, and go through all the different, you know, ride in the street, ride on the side, take up the street. So it was definitely interesting, so, but I did learn quite a bit there. The one thing is, I did this week, our new chief of police, I did speak with him and met with him yesterday, I believe it was. There's a lot of things going on, but he will be our, obviously, our local traffic authority. And we talked a little bit about at some point starting to collaborate and maybe do some education as well. I think we could use some education as staff on, you know, bike headlines and so forth. SS four, and part of the reason we did apply for an SS four grant for Old Sabre some time ago, we didn't get that grant, I think, because of the region of the grant. Once the SS four regional grant, I think, wraps up, I think it may open the door once we get to the point of having plans and so forth, for us to go through for an Old Sabre plan to kind of bounce off of that, or, you know, it's our entire day, just is, you know, another possibility. So anyway, so thinking about that, the other thing I thought was interesting at the conference, they had some developments where what they did was they took old historic homes and zoning regulations to give density bonuses. And they would keep the historic storefront or the historic look of the house from the street, either add to it on the back, and they use historic, they use tax preservation credits and then affordable housing credits. So I thought, like, well, that's kind of creative because you have a lot of nice big homes that, how many do we have that we see, you know, the wrecking ball is coming towards them, but if you could get a density bonus, the preservation. So that's something I think we could think about in the future, because we do have a number of homes. You know, maybe that would apply for, or apply to, you know. But then we also have soils. The other thing I wanted to mention too, and I know we're not an election of officers, but the Wetlands Commission has some vacancies, but we also need to find someone who will be the planning commission representative to the Inland Wetlands Commission. So I don't know if there's anyone here who would be interested in doing that. Paula Kay served as that, and the Wetlands Commission could use their representative member. So I thought I would just bring that up because they have those vacancies, so I don't know. Anyone wants to jump up and volunteer?
I, I could do that, yeah. I do, as you know, I think I need to be reappointed at the end of the month with Carl.
Okay.
Whereas I assume
I don't have any appointments, I think, this week, but I don't know. I found my agenda, there's, I don't know if you're on there, though.
No.
They had a whole list of some appointments they were doing.
Oh, okay.
So they're in that cycle.
Yeah, they didn't, they didn't tell me yet. Well, you know, yeah, if that works out, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. And then said I'll stop staff report.
Yeah. Well, that'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
All those in favor, aye. All right, any opposed? Any upstays? Very good. Thank you all.